That's great.
I felt small, I can't get that smell completely out of my hands.
Yep. Call me, Nor.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the oath for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Pippiya? Schroller?
Here.
Uh, Hughes?
Here.
Feigman? Frye?
Present.
Behrens?
Here.
Fromm?
Here.
We have a form 5-0. I would ask that you try to speak up when you do speak, that way the camera can get it.
Alright.
Please, thank you.
Uh, next up we have the approval of the minutes, anybody have any changes or amendments?
I do. Uh, I see where they had the date, uh, April the 23rd for the last meeting, it should've been March the 23rd.
Last meeting was?
The minutes from April the 23rd, regular meeting were presented for approval, it should've been March the 23rd.
Yep. Okay, anything else?
It's moved approved minutes of regular meeting, April 13th, 2020, with amendment.
Second.
Alright, Hall and Paper say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Next up, uh, we have public comments, which are currently, uh, we're not doing that because of the COVID. Uh, next up we have, uh, business discussion ordinance 1890, uh, rezoning of the Brockie Heights, Brockie Heights. If you may have any thoughts or comments on that, I know we've been talking about it for a while, so, pretty straightforward.
Moved to approve the rezoning of the Brockie Heights Estate, ordinance number eight, not, 1890.
Second. Any more discussion? Uh, roll call.
Schroller?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Behrens?
Yes.
Fromm?
Yes.
5-0 passes.
Alright. Uh, next up we have the appropriations ordinance number 3722.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Oh, consent, I'm skipping that, way ahead of myself here. Uh, we just have the backflow preventer on there.
I just wanted you to see.
Backflow preventer. Right, for barbment, yeah.
For the water plant, down it on where we treat it.
Yeah, if I ever stood that eat, we have, we haven't tested, well, annually probably, maybe found some issues and it needed to be replaced.
Yes, it's been maintained previously and the guy who maintains it, uh, said now it's time.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, Terry. Our insurance went way up this time.
We're, uh, that's, we're not on that part yet, this is just a consent agenda.
Oh, okay.
Moved to approve $2,808 for an inch and a half backflow preventer to Eisenbach Plumbing, Seneca.
Second.
Any more discussion? Uh, roll call.
Schroller?
Uh, yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Behrens?
Yes.
Fromm?
Yes.
5-0 passes.
Uh, now we have the appropriations ordinance number 3722, Terry, you got something about that?
No, I just, I, I noticed that about almost $40,000, our insurance went up.
Twenty-seven thousand.
Or twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven thousand?
Big jump.
Correct, they reclassified historical sites, um, so that reclassification, uh, according to them justifies more payment on insurance.
What now?
They reclassified the Custer Block as a, uh, for historic sites, um, they, their justification is that it takes more money to maintain these properties, so if they were ever to get a natural disaster or anything like that, they would be submitted to insurance, um, it would cost them more, so they're raising our premiums. Our insurance agent is actually fighting this, trying to get it lowered, but that's, that's why, why, why it's at right, right now.
That's a good job.
Yes.
Moved to approve appropriation ordinance 3722 in the amount of $412,996.90.
That second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Schroller?
Uh, yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Behrens?
Yes.
Fromm?
Yes.
5-0 passes. Uh, from my report, um, uh, I have, um, just a few things, um, first on the list is a possibility of applying for a CEVG grant, uh, for our wastewater, um, uh, for the lagoons, uh, as we have been directed by KDHT to address issues, uh, this seems the, uh, the opportunity to, uh, apply a grant towards it since we are required to fix it anyways. The caveat is, uh, that we need to get, uh, the grant application going and we have required meetings to attend, uh, because they're specific to water and wastewater, uh, all the other things, for instance, firehouse didn't require us to show up at a, uh, one of these meetings, but they have kayak, they were called kayak meetings, uh, that all water and wastewater applicants are required to attend. Uh, and they start those, uh, meetings in May, I think we have to attend at least one, uh, between May and July or something like that. So if we can get, uh, this going, um, it would be beneficial, cause as I quote, or, um, uh, one of the engineers that I did talk to, say, uh, 99% chance of getting CDVG funding for a wastewater project like this, so, uh, I, I think it's important for us to apply for this. Uh, one, we have to get this process going anyways, uh, and this will, even if we don't get a, a grant, we're gonna do this work. So, uh, we might as well try for, for the funding.
Looking at your 2022?
Right, yes, for this application. So that's, uh, I'm looking for direction, I can, I think I can get engineers to submit, uh, qualifications, uh, for the next council meeting, for you guys to approve an engineer to, to look at it, so if, if you would like me to, to bring back qualifications, uh, I can definitely do that. And I can send it out to the, uh, Water Wastewater Committee to review, just so they can get, uh, a firsthand glance, uh, before the meeting and, and give you their take or, or do, uh, uh, an overview on that too.
What $600,000 we as a city of Marysville don't have to come up with?
Correct.
Is there somebody local that we, or who would we use as an engineer, I mean, is there somebody?
Well, uh, CES did get, and this is, um, uh, CES did pick up, uh, an engineer that has 30 years of experience. I am unsure, and I, and this is no knock against them, I'm unsure if their CDVG, uh, qualifications or their experience, uh, so that, uh, they could, with as much experience as their engineer has, uh, would be beneficial, uh, so I would pit them against some of the other firms that have, that we know do work on this, so, I mean, that would be the way the qualifications come into play, where you guys would decide off of. But yes, CES has already showed interest in doing this.
Wasn't Wilson and Company the original?
Yes, Wilson and Company was the original.
Would you ask, go?
Wilson and Company was the original designer of the lagoon site, Terry.
But CES, do you think their guy they just brought on has wastewater?
Thirty, thirty years of experience in wastewater.
Okay.
Yes.
Awesome.
I approached Rob Peschel about this and he is pretty interested about, in, in it.
So, do we need to have a motion, or does consensus of council?
Consensus will work and I'll pull, I'll, I'll get the engineers to, uh, do the qualifications, I'll get them to turn it over real quick.
I'd say let's go for it. We're gonna have to do the work anyway, we might as well get some help paying for it.
Okay. I will, uh, pull qualifications, uh, I'll pull the wastewater, wastewater, uh, committee into it, uh, at the very least, I'll send it out when the, when I get the qualifications, I'll send it out to the group, uh, to, to Water Wastewater and see how they feel and then, uh, it'll come to the next council meeting, so the council can have a decision on it, uh, in the very end, so. Alright, uh, the next one is hillside mowers, uh, the, I included some quotes, uh, for the replacement of our 1998 Dewey's mower, uh, we used to mow the sides of the lagoons, uh, we received, uh, one quote from Cut Quick Corporation for a standard, uh, 2020 commercial, uh, slope mower, and the price for $58,604, and, which includes a 2% discount, um, for some reason they managed to pull from an Oklahoma contract, uh, to get that 2%, uh, which was all fine in the quote, um, we also received two quotes from Professional Turf Products, one was for a brand new, uh, 72-inch model, uh, uh, slope mower, which is the newer version of what the Dewey's is, it's the, it's the same product, just the new, uh, name, new, uh, new version, and that was $52,780, uh, the other quote is their demo model, uh, with about six hours on it, uh, for $45,675, uh, the mower, uh, like I said, is the new version of Dewey's. Uh, I did check with local dealers to see if they had anything comparable to this mower, uh, basically what they have, for instance, Bruna has Cub Cadet, and Cub Cadet doesn't have a hillside mower that keeps you straight up, uh, neither does Can't Equip, they have, uh, Adam said they have ones that they guarantee won't flip up to a certain angle, uh, but, they don't give you the, the sa, the feel of safety where you're still vertical, uh, on those steep hills, and John Deere, uh, they don't, the same thing, their, uh, their mowers are zero turn or the, and they said up to a certain angle they can go, but still no vertical access, uh, I did talk to them about, uh, uh, a mower that you put on the back of a tractor, um, that, I mean, that would be a potential, but, we have two tractors, one's out at the dump, one is used for the airport, uh, and to pull either one of those off of what their current duties are and add to their workload, I don't think would be feasible, especially since the, the lagoons are three miles away, or, I mean, it's a, it's a trip to get them out there.
Good drive on the tractor.
Yes, it is a good drive on the tractor, um.
The demo one, does it carry the same warranty as the new one?
Yeah.
What'd you say, Todd?
The demo one, I wanted to know if it carries the same warranty as a brand new one.
Yes, they would, they would warranty it, yes.
I think that's probably good value, if there's something kinky with it, they might've figured it out already.
That, and somebody made that comment too, so, yeah, they've been mowing on it for six hours, so.
Yeah.
They found something, if anything.
If there's something comes out of the door, out of the factory door wrong, they probably found it.
Yep.
Will it get us to trade in on the old one?
It doesn't work, I doubt it, um, it's, uh, no, I'm gonna say no, uh, guaranteed, cause we can't get parts for it, it's not worth anything.
Is it still worth putting on Purple Wave?
I doubt it, it's, it's scrap metal right now, uh, we've been, our, our crew has been fixing it and fixing it and fixing it and at this point, like I said, we can't order anything to fix it any better.
I thought if somebody else had an old one and they needed some parts, maybe worth a thousand dollars for them to have it.
That's a good point, I could see, um, we got some other things that are, I could, that'd be a first.
Scrap, scrap metal's pretty low right now, so.
Okay, that is a good point, we could, we could definitely try it on Purple Wave, yes.
It is, is the, this Dewey's, is it, it totally, I mean, it's not working at all now?
It's not working at all, and our guys, our guys in the Parks Department, uh, know what they're, they, they can keep equipment running as, as, with the best of them.
Well, I know a couple years ago, it was down at Truck Repair Plus and they did some work on it down there.
That time, he said, you cannot get what you need to make this work, said it's, you can go.
Right.
That's what the truck mechanic said.
Yeah, and we bought this brand new back in 1998, 99, uh, so it's gotten its 22 years of service, uh, good life out of it. Uh, this would be another 20-year purchase, yes, Terry?
Is there any possibility we've got, I believe it's Swinnumon's doing the mowing for the, the big, not the sides, but the, the rest of it?
For the, no, for the levee, he's doing the levee, not, not the lagoons.
I was just wondering if it could be that, he'd be interested in shooting us a figure to do it with his tractor and a rotary mower and we wouldn't have to buy it right away, instead of the city doing it, maybe he'd be interested to do it now. It's just a thought.
I don't know about that.
It's just looking at $46,000, it's kind of interesting to see what it could be.
Do we use this thing other places besides just the lagoons, or is that the only place we use it?
Well, that hill where the water tower is, is almost, they're trying to string trim that, they can't mow it, that, I know they use it there and they use it, there's one more place, where is it, is it on the levee, no?
Ste, anywhere where we got a steep hill or ditch.
But I do know that Water Tower Hill is one of them.
It's just a suggestion, I just thought we could, maybe ask him if he's interested.
But this would be a, again, uh, hopefully a 20-year investment, so you spread that $46,000 out over 20 years and, um, yeah, so, however.
What, $2,100 a year, $2,200 a year?
Right.
The term on investment's pretty good.
Okay, is that a motion?
I'm making a motion, we purchased this, uh, uh, demo model for $45,675, um, to mow the lagoons, it's a, it's a, uh, ATM 72 LC.
Yes.
And the demo model for $45,675.
To come out of, I mean, this full equipment reserve.
Do you think all of it out of there is the way to go?
Yes, yes, it's an unforeseen purchase, so.
Second. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Schroller?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Behrens?
Yes.
Fromm?
Yes.
5-0 passes. Alright, the last thing on my list is I included, um, code book, the updates for the code book, uh, if you remember, uh, those that were on the council, um, uh, in the fall last year, I submitted the same list, there's a couple at the end that weren't on the last list, but I just want you guys to look over this for the next couple weeks, if you see something, um, email it to me, that way I can know exactly what you're talking about, uh, just reference what you're talking about, um, and, and I can get your, your questions answered, uh, and if there's any changes that you do find that are necessary, the clerical ones, uh, I can include those in, in the changes as well, so they can go in, so that the code book can be fixed, uh, for the, um, ordinance that comes next time, so I, I wasn't planning on any discussion tonight, uh, I wanted to give you guys all the information, so you had it for at least two weeks, um, so that's all I have, uh, other than, uh, like I said, this is for clerical stuff, things that we don't do anymore, um, uh, not a, a law change, um, if you wanted to change the law, uh, I would recommend doing it via ordinance, uh, separate ordinance, so it's delivered, um, and then that would be, uh, done that way rather than just, uh, an ordinance, uh, to confirm the whole book, but, that was all I had for that.
I have one question for Austin, I gotta, I looked through this with some serious help and, uh, come up with a few things that are questions that I'd like, I got a copy for everybody here, uh, the different things that's going through there, about how the numbers got changed, reversed, uh, the references were made, and I wondered if I could please give you a copy of it, and it don't have to be no discussion, but I got a copy.
Okay, yeah, you can give me a copy.
Okay.
And if you have any more, email them to me, please.
Anything else, quickly move on to, uh, state committees. Uh, first up, Street, anything on Street?
Looked like, uh, clean up, city quiet cleanup weren't go well.
Yeah.
Stagnant pile of debris out of the city dump, that's for sure.
I was a week late to take bark, but that's alright.
I know the crews are busy, getting involved out there, so.
I saw a lot of big piles across some streets, whole trees stacked up.
Mm-hmm.
It's good.
North Street had quite a few piles down.
North Street and 11th Road from Landalls East, when are we scheduled to take a look at some work on that? Because it's really starting to break up bad.
It is starting to, yeah.
About like St. Greg's Cemetery on 11th Road there.
It's scheduled to, I think, chip and seal, I, I.
I think we may have to do some serious work before we get to chip seal.
Yeah, we, it needs.
Well, he's, they're, they're doing, um, the, the crack seal, not, uh, yes, crack seal and, uh, um.
Mastick stuff.
Mastick.
I think we're gonna have to do more than that.
I guess I'm like Todd, I think it needs more than that, I think it needs to be dug out.
Couple, couple places by patches, it always is by a patch, and then just right by the corner even there, the whole vehicle lane for 50 feet is just broke up, I mean, you could go out, like, get shovel and dig it out.
Right.
It's, I mean, I don't, I think we're gonna have to dig out and put some serious patches in before we even chip seal or crack seal, I think it's gonna take on everything we got.
I personally, I think it'd be better to have Hall Brothers come in and dig it out, clean it back myself.
Well, they, they dug out all the main portions of it, and what they had, what Hall Brothers had recommended was a milling overlay on that section.
I think it's gonna take you down to the base and.
I think, I'm like Todd, I think it's clear down in the base again, where the problem's at.
It's funny, cause where the patches are, are mostly pretty good, but it's kind of just outside of them.
They put a lot of work in that base, I mean, they put three-foot of rock in, in that base on the north side when they dug it out, so.
Gary, his opinion was that if we can get the mastick down and then chip and seal over it, it'll, it'll be a much better street. That, that's why he's been mastick sealing it, and it'll seal off, um, the base from the water, and then you put a good chip and seal over that and you got a new road, that, that was his opinion.
I just think there's some spots we may have to address, I think a lot of it, that's true, I just, I, some, I run on it most mornings, so I see it like, oh crap, right there, and you could trip over it, it's that chunked up, so.
Right, right, right.
And I, I think we're gonna have to do a little spot repair probably, otherwise I think we'll just end up having to do it later and dig up the chip seal, so that's not good.
Okay.
Um, connected to that, that upper section of, uh, uh, how are we gonna say it, Carolina and Upper Ninth Street there above the WPA steps, it's really broke up through there, um, I know we can't get our street machine in there, have we considered, again, any kind of trying to widen the right of way or finding a way around it, it's coming around that corner on a, from the, from the east.
Upper Ninth.
Yeah, it's pretty rough.
I think it got, um, thinned out because you had to put that barrier, barricade up there, the ba, the barrier, I think that's what made it so small, and I don't think there's any place to expand that to have a, and sure footing.
Northeast, could we, uh, talk to the landowner about purchasing a sliver of land or otherwise, I mean, it seems like a pretty valid cause, it's kind of a tight corner anyway.
It is.
And it gets more traffic than you'd think, uh, well, it's breaking up, so it's obviously getting some traffic.
Gary did say he thought, um, we couldn't get this stuff to, to do, you know, we have that patch machine that can do like we did on Saturday.
Right.
He said last year he couldn't get the material, so, he, that was on his.
To-do list.
Alright, cool.
So it may, that may fit good enough, that I do know he did say that, you know, the Hall Brothers didn't have the material.
I'll talk to Gary again.
One more thing on Street, the visors on the stoplight on the southwest corner of 10th and Center, it's been missing the red one for going on two or three years, but now the amber one's half on, looks like it's about ready to fall off, I don't know if it's just wind or it's getting clipped, I, you can see quite a bit of trucks have turned over the, uh, the ADA ramps there, and I don't know if it's somehow getting bumped, if they're getting that close and not taking out the pole, they're better drivers than that, so.
I'll, little look into that.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on Street? Uh, water and wastewater, um, I had something on that one, I saw it, that, uh, the findings were bad spots in the sewer lines than they had previously, when they're cleaning those before they do the lining, something about that in the, in the.
Yeah, well, last year we were fortunate that we didn't have to fix anything, which is an anomaly, so this year, Kent told me about five or six locations that probably need some work, one of the bigger ones was in an alley, possibly, so.
I saw one that was like 60 foot, a 60-foot stretch, but didn't say where, I'm just curious.
Right, yeah, I asked him about that this morning.
Down there between Elm and, uh, Walmond.
Right, so we'll have to address that pretty quickly, cause I think it's a month turnaround when they clean versus when they come back and, and fix it, so we'll, we'll find a contractor to get that going.
As I was gonna say, are we gonna try it in house, are we gonna contract it out?
Oh, we're gonna, yeah, then, we can never do it in the time they need us to, so, like, like in years previous, like, but like I said, last, last year we didn't have to, cause we did really good.
Yeah, we lucked.
Uh, we lucked out, the year before that, um, uh, we got, uh, Charlie. LoWizo to do it, and, and it was just, okay, we found these spots, who's available, and then we got them to work, so, yeah, so I think Todd, Kent said five or six spots.
We find any more flush tanks?
Yeah, I, I don't think so.
Not yet.
Not yet.
I see, well, I, I talked to him this morning, or this afternoon, he said he hadn't yet, so.
Right.
But, that's all I had, anybody else have anything? Uh, Parks and Rec?
I see they got the park pretty well done down there.
Yeah, we're just waiting on the slides.
Oh, I wondered if they were replacing the slide, I thought it was still laying there.
They were, yeah, the slide melted, uh, so that was in the replacement, it was just the last, they haven't sent it yet, it wasn't, uh, the factory didn't make it yet, uh, due to all the circumstances, so, we're waiting on them to send it.
Did they ever find out who did it?
No.
They didn't?
Nope, no, the, whoever they've been talking to have been pretty tight with about it.
So the city's insurance is stuck with Dewey and paying for it?
Yes.
But it looks nice.
Yes, it does, yes, it does, um, definitely nice new wood on there, does, doesn't want to.
Anything else, Parks and Rec?
Uh, Cemetery and Airport? Police and Fire? Admin and Finance?
Terry?
I, yeah, I have one thing, I, I think it'd be nice, we got an email from Ellen Barber, and I thought it'd really be nice, what she said she did here, some of this if it would've been put on, uh, Facebook and, uh, Marysville. and I thought it'd really be nice if what she said she did here, some of this, if it would have been put on Facebook and the Marysville bill, where everybody get to see it, there's, I think, it might help a lot of people here in town. She did everything it says that she did in this letter, like, I don't think it has to all be put in there, but some folks are kind of disappointed that they didn't know about different loans and a few other things.
Yeah, all the loans that have been available have been, Chamber's been getting that information out. All that information that she gave, Chamber's been working on that, Main Street's been working, well, Main Street and Chamber, obviously the same thing. They've been getting that out to everybody as well.
Most banks call their customers.
Yeah, the, the banks, the banks.
For your account.
Banks have been taking care of that, all that information, yes.
I just think it'd be nice if it'd be on our Marysville website too. I couldn't find it on there today.
Oh, the, you gotta go to the Chamber and Main Street. We're, we're not a place for businesses to go for information, they don't look to us. The, the Chamber helps, and Main Street helps their, their group figure it out, nobody, nobody really calls us for information.
It looks like it says, choose Marshall County, Kansas dot com is where it's at, and that their website had been visited by eleven hundred and thirty visits in four weeks, and Facebook posts reached three thousand people.
That's pretty great.
They did Facebook and all that.
Yeah, so.
So if you're not a member of the Chamber of Commerce, you don't find out about it?
Or, well, no, the banks have been doing the work too. If you've got money in their bank, they want you to know about.
Right.
These, because that's where the loans are coming from.
So the banks are notifying people?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I think when it first came out, I think that they told people, go to your bank, that's kind of where all these.
Bank called us?
Yeah, yeah, the banks are actively reaching out to businesses.
She says she's reached out to, personally, to businesses that.
Yeah, she has to, Ellen's doing a good job of, of reaching out to and trying to connect those businesses with, with the funds. Anything else on Admin Finance? Okay, appointments and wage determinations, we have two people up for appointments, municipal judge, Bobby Price, and it'll be effective May first and expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty, and the city prosecutor, Megan Worcheck, and the same thing, May first to December thirty-first. And Megan is a reappointment, she's currently in that position, and Bobby is a, a replacement.
Move to approve the mayor's appointments.
Second?
Sir?
Any more discussion? Roll call?
Schroller?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Behrens?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Uh, next up, we have city attorney, or executive session, and we do need to go into executive session for a little bit. Who wants to read this? Time for real estate acquisition.
You're close.
Don't, don't you have it memorized by now?
I move the city council reset into executive session to discuss possible acquisition of real estate pursuant to acquisition of real estate, exception KSA seven-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-six. This session will include the mayor, city council, and the city administrator.
And city?
Attorney.
And the city attorney, how long?
Ten minutes.
This, this session will last ten minutes, the open meeting will resume in the city council chamber at seven forty-five.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
It was the other day, last week sometime, I was like, I was like, who's that? I'm like, I don't know who that is, I'm waiting, but you were concentrating on traffic.
Call this meeting back to order, no binding decisions were made. Next up, we have roundtable.
Send dear, come?
I'm coming. Just trying not to spill it.
Okay, roundtable, Diane, do you have anything?
You first had to say the meeting.
I did, I missed it.
We were, we were gonna wait for it.
Other than the park looks really nice, moving on.
Terry?
No, no, don't have any.
Okay, Todd?
They, I saw the sidewalk came out along Twelfth Street there, south of Broadway, where Brian Kraftfunk is building. I assumed that there's gonna be a sidewalk go back in there, right?
They're gonna remove the rest of it and put a five-foot in.
Okay.
Yeah, because they, they, yeah, they're gonna put wherever they're taking it out, they're putting it back.
Okay, yeah, I was, I just, it was graded across, and I thought, oh, I hope that we didn't somehow, I missed it, we waited and putting a sign.
They wanted to get rid of the, um.
The retaining.
The retaining wall, that was the main goal.
I figured that was probably the case. The dog park down here, south of Jackson, is anything, I mean, where is that at? I know they were kind of in the fundraising exploratory phase, but.
They were still working on it, um.
Kind of in the ether?
Yeah, uh, she was putting some things together, trying to get it on, uh, I think another fundraising cycle for Pony, Pony Up, that's on hold, so.
Yeah, everything.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, the parks and stuff have gotten a lot of use, I've noticed lately, Alco Springs, not City Limits, but, but City Park, the trails, everything's, I mean, looks like people are mostly being respectful of the distance, and people are just spending time outside more than I've seen in past years, so I guess that's.
That's good.
The only other thing was, I bugged Austin about it when I noticed it last week, he knew I was gonna say something, but those new streetlights we got put in by Evergy up here around the courthouse are god awful. Not the color, I don't care, they're galvanized instead of black, I voted for that too, but they are about five or six foot taller than the old ones, and there is no reason that we need streetlights that darn tall on just a regular old street, downtown or not. They are highway height lights. I actually went out and tried to kind of measure the ones on the highway, I'm not sure they are to put taller than the ones on the highway, and I think they look awful, they compete with the scenic view of the courthouse and everything else, they look out of place, they've got no business being there. I think we made a horrible mistake by not sussing out those details, it's all fine and good, they came and put them in, but I think that we made a bad mistake. I, I know we probably didn't spend the money to put decorative ones in, but it would have been nice to find a compromise. I, I know that lights need replaced, but I feel a little bit misled, you see a picture or something, that's one thing, and then come out and you see that it's my height above the old lights, it actually is higher than my house, which is higher than Broadway by a fair bit, so, I just, I, it's kind of a cautionary tale, I think, of us trying to find weird details like that on things a little bit better, so.
That's all I got on that.
Alright.
Alright.
Colleen?
No.
Do you have nothing this evening?
I don't really have anything either.
Move to Jared.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post.